Yes, Mr. McDermid, you can call the meeting to order. We have quorum, sir.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, and um, for this, um, October the twentieth, two thousand twenty, uh, the Planning Commission of North Miami, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Um, Chairman Charles Ernst. Commissioner Howard Tonkin.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Pichon.
Present.
Commissioner Michael McDermid.
Present.
Commissioner Milton Goodwin. Commissioner Bernadette Pierre. Commissioner Karen Leach.
Present.
Commissioner, we have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Uh, can we have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting? Well, I guess we didn't have a last meeting, so um, I guess, I guess that's not necessary, correct?
There are some meetings in, in the agenda package from September one.
Yes, well, that was approved at the last meeting.
Okay, it was.
Yeah, so, mm-hmm. So we can continue the next thing.
We approved the minutes at a meeting that didn't occur.
No, that's what I'm saying. We're not approving minutes, no.
We, we did meet, we just could not complete the item that was scheduled on the agenda.
We just continued the meeting that we had.
Yes, that's okay. Okay, we can move on.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so um, I guess we'll go to the first item.
Okay, I, I have a notice that I typically read at this point, and um, I'll go ahead and do that. That's okay, we can, Mr. Chair. Is that okay, staff?
Yes. We, uh, can I confirm something? I'm sorry. Edward, Commissioner Edward Clark, I just need to hear that you're on, on the, on the call. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, the North Miami City Council has adopted by resolution virtual meeting procedures for the conduct of public hearings during the coronavirus pandemic and other public emergencies. They provide, as stated in the public notice for this meeting, members of the public are invited to attend the virtual public hearing and provide oral or written comments on the matter. Comments, which much includes your full name and address, may be provided in advance of the hearing via telephone at three oh five eight nine five nine eight oh three, or by sending an email to publiccomments@northmiami.gov. Comments received by the advertised date and time will be read into the record during the hearing. Comments received after the deadline will become part of the record but will not be read during the hearing. None of the items on today's agenda are quasi-judicial under the virtual public hearing procedures, so we do not need to swear witnesses. Persons raising their hand within one minute following the announcement of the opening of the public hearing will be called upon by the meeting chair. Each person will be given two minutes to state their name and address and make their comments. Press examination is allowed by staff, the applicant, and the board or commission. The public hearing will then be closed, and the Board of Commission will then deliberate the matter and reach a decision which may be approved with conditions, denial, or continuance. I believe under the procedures we followed last time, we were going to go through all of the presentations and then have discussion and action by the commission. Um, you, Mr. Chair, you might want to confirm whether we'll proceed that way again today.
Okay, so staff, can we, uh, proceed with PC twelve dash twenty, please?
Yes, we should.
You should read the resolution title.
You gotta read the, you gotta read the title first.
Should we go ahead and do that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So, I'll go ahead and do that. It's a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, approving the award of fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one Community Development Block Grant, PRN CDBG, Close PRN Funds to non-profit community-based organizations, CBOS, as required by twenty-four CFR five seventy point two oh one subsection E, and providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. Since this is not a quasi-judicial item, we do not need disclosures. We can proceed with the staff report.
Thank you.
Okay, staff?
Good afternoon, Planning Commission Board members. Uh, Marie Franz Jean Ference, City of North Miami Housing and Social Services Assistant Director. Staff is requesting that the Planning Commission Board review the proposal packages along with the short video presentation submitted by the CBOS for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, assess the evaluation committee's recommendation, and provide input and concurrence prior to forwarding to City Council for final consideration. A little background of the CBOS is the City of North Miami is an entitlement jurisdiction that receives really allocation.
Stephanie, would you mute caller three, please?
Okay, caller three has been muted.
The City of North Miami is an entitlement jurisdiction that receive really allocation from the U.S. Department HUD to assist with housing and community service needs. Per HUD regulation, the city is supposed to allocate fifteen percent of the CDBG total allocation for public service activity. On July twenty-seven, the City of North Miami Housing and Social Services requested, uh, issued a request for a proposal seeking proposal from various community-based organizations to provide public services to North Miami residents. Due to the social distancing caused by COVID nineteen, the city is still not conducting in-person meeting. HSS staff requested a two-minute video presentation from each organization in lieu of an in-person presentation. The total of the amount federal funding allocated set aside for the public service initially was for one fifteen, one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. After revisions of the priorities as outlined in the, in the consolidated plan twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, there is an increasing demand for public services. Hence, staff has increased the allocation to public service to one hundred thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Thirteen, uh, organization responses responded to the RFP with requests only two hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. Out of the thirteen applications received, the committee recommends funding to nine organizations. The committee includes staff from the Community Planning Development, personnel, code compliance, library, public works department, and each proposal which was evaluated to the, on the multiple criteria to principally benefit slow and moderate income persons, prevents and eliminates slum or blight, addresses an urgent need or problem in the community. Staff is about to present the CBO presentations, uh, thirteen, well, thirteen of them, but out of that, none of them were recommended. I'm about to name out the names right now. You had, in your package, you had MJD Wellness and Community Sentimental Health, Prosperity Social and Community Development Group, North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizens and Services Incorporated, Russell Life Skills and Reading Foundation Incorporated, DBS Russell Life, Russell Education Foundation, Avenue of Excellence Incorporated, Expert Resource and Community Center Incorporated, Circle of Love Ministry, also known as YOV, Youth of Valor Empowerment, Row Woods Miami Incorporated and Urban, Global Innovative Foundation Incorporated, ProStar, Community United, Copper Bridge Foundation, MJD Wellness Community Center. Those were the organizations that have applied. An email was sent to them allowing them, advising them to attend in the event that you have questions for you, for them. So staff is about to present the video that was presented to HSF and the, and the committee. Stephanie, we're ready. For the video, please.
Mr. Tonkin.
There's supposed to be sound, we did not hear it.
Cannot hear. We asked that everyone please mute your microphone. We're getting the feedback right now. Thank you.
I don't hear any sound. I don't know if anybody else is.
No audio here.
No, no audio here as well. Still no audio.
Okay, give us a moment, please. IT is here with us. Trying to change the speaker.
Wow, what can we say? Uh, Avenue of Excellence was started in two thousand nine. Um, we are an etiquette, social protocol, professional development company. Uh, we do most of our trainings out of the Ritz-Carlton, Fort Lauderdale, and the Biltmore Coral Gables. Fast forward to two thousand and sixteen, um, working with Robin Bear, who is now our lead sewing instructor as well as our, um, creative designer, we launched our table linen line. Uh, that just seemed to work after training for over a decade on etiquette and social protocol. We developed our own product, which was our table linen line, beautiful linens, uh, cotton, silks. It just works. Um, took that, took the table linen line and said, you know what? We're gonna teach people how to sew. You know, we're gonna reach into the community, do a social enterprise program and for adults and for kids, and we're gonna get them a skill. For adults, we're gonna give them a trade, and we discovered the City of North Miami Community Development Block Grant. Uh, we're so grateful, and it works. You know, it works. Uh, for adults, uh, our hope is that one day we're gonna be able to not only train, continue to train adults how to sew, but hire them, have a place of employment, so that those that have personal challenges, that necessarily don't have the normal fit for conventional type of work setting, they can come and work for us. But in the meantime, we're teaching adults how to sew. We're giving them a skill set, teaching them reading skills, teaching them math skills, because they have to measure the, um, thread, they have to measure the fabric. Children, it, it's ju, it's just phenomenal. Um, there was sense of mindfulness, calmness, because we allow them to focus, we give them breathing exercises before they start their sewing techniques. They learn embroidery, they learn hand sewing, stitching, they get introductory lessons for, uh, the sewing machine. And we started all at the Church of North Miami, moved to, uh, the North Miami Library where we picked up a lot more momentum. And then, you know what? COVID nineteen hit. We thought it was gonna take us out, and did. We shifted, put everything online, um, Zoom, website, everything, and you know what? It works, and it's gonna continue to work. Avenue of Excellence and, um, our community sewing classes in the City of North Miami. It's beautiful.
Good evening. My name is Danny Felton. I'm the executive director of the Experts Resource Community Center located at six ten Northwest Point eighty-third Street. We are a HUD-approved organization focused on pre-purchase, post-purchase, foreclosure prevention, down payment assistance, and higher education. Uh, we have spent the last, uh, ten years providing services for the residents of the City of North Miami uh, as regards to financial literacy for adults and youth, as well as pre-purchase and post-purchase workshops. Our workshops are held in English, Spanish, and Creole. We have hosted our workshops throughout the City of North Miami at various locations. We are a fully integrated housing counseling agency here to assist individuals that are looking to purchase homes, as well as individuals that are having challenges with homes. As of this week, I went online just to check, and based upon the pandemic, the cor, the effect that the coronavirus has had on individuals, which has caused them to go to forbearance and to experience challenges with their income, there has been an influx of a hundred and sixty, a hundred and ninety-two foreclosures in the City of Miami, the City of North Miami. Our organization is prepared. We have, uh, provided all the trainings necessary to assist these individuals in stabilizing homeownership, as well as continuing to provide our home buyer education workshops. We have transitioned our workshops to provide the workshops to Zoom, uh, Zoom platform, which we have consistently, uh, had done over the last, over the last, uh, four months. Uh, we're looking for your assistance as we attempt to continue our services in assisting the residents of the City of North Miami. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Paul Russell, and I'm the co-founder of the Russell Education Foundation. My mother and I, over twenty years ago, founded this organization to help families like ours. My mother was a single mother with five boys, and every single day she would get us off to school. Uh, she would go to work, pick us up, pick us, uh, take us to football practice. Uh, while we're at football practice, she would make dinner, and then she would, uh, pick us up from football practice, bring us home, serve us dinner, and somewhere around ten, eleven o'clock, we always realized that no one had done their homework, or studied, or read a book. And while my mom and I were sitting at a kitchen table, we said, we'll bet there's a lot of families just like us. Families who are just trying to make ends meet and put food on the table, and they need a helping hand. So we started this organization to make sure that kids have the resources they need to be successful. Early on, we noticed that kids were not efficient at reading, and we knew that if we could teach a kid, a child how to read, that they could be successful in everything that they did. Um, there's a statistic that says that, um, there's an eighty, eighty-three percent chance that if a child is not reading at a proficient level by third grade, that they will not graduate from high school. Think about that. Not graduating from high school. That would derail their opportunity. They can't go to vocational school, they can't go to college, and that really, uh, limits their income potential to provide for the family. Well, we competed this by SARA and this tutorial program, and we have been in North Miami since two thousand and four and impacted hundreds of kids. When a kid come, when a child comes to our program, the first thing that we do is we do a pre-test. We evaluate where they are so we can see the results by the end of the year. Over a hundred and twelve percent, um, increase by each one of our children on average happens because of our influence. We have hardworking teachers, teachers that are dedicated, teachers that provide a service to make sure that our students have everything that they need. When a child comes to our program, the first thing that we do is show them that we love, love them, and show them that we care. We give them settled in. Um, they pick out their homework. And then we work on deficiencies that they may have, whether it's, um, deficiencies in language arts, deficiencies in spelling, deficiencies in any aspect of their education protocol. And in the past ten years, we've added math, science, um, we're working on that, adding engineer. We really wanna become a full steam program, because we believe that our children have all the res, if they have the right resources, that they have all the abilities to be great men and women, to impact and transform the world. We're asking you to partner with us to help us serve your children, so that we can be the best country in the world for the children who are our number one asset.
Hello, my name is Debbie Kleinberg, and I'm the Executive Director of the North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizen Services. The North Miami Foundation is probably one of the oldest social service agencies in North Miami, founded in nineteen seventy-four by a group of civic activists who saw needs among the elderly and wanted to find ways to assist. Our services include screening and assessment and counseling by a trained social work staff, transportation to the grocery store, home maker, volunteer services, and home-delivered meals. Pre-COVID, many in our community struggle daily with food insecurity, which is not having reliable access to nutritious or sufficient quantity of food. Food insecurity can cause or aggravate health conditions and result in malnutrition or even death. It's estimated that twenty-three percent of seniors in Miami-Dade County suffer from food insecurity. If we look at North Miami, that mean over two thousand seniors. The threat of COVID nineteen only exacerbates the issue, with seniors who are able to regularly shop for themselves afraid to even leave their home for fear of contracting the illness. With funding, we seek to enhance the quality of life for seven frail elders by providing two home-delivered meals a day to seven seniors, as I said, with funding, it would be a total of thirty-eight hundred and twenty-two meals. A hot lunchtime meal will be provided Monday through Saturday, with a cold prepaid plated item for Sunday. Breakfast is always provided the day before with the lunchtime meal. We hope that you will consider funding this needed program, and thank you for the time to provide you with some information about us today.
My name is Natalie Fainloy, and I am a case manager at Prosperity Social Community Development Group Inc., the Now Project Mental Health. The Now Project provides mental health services to youth and young adults ages sixteen to twenty-four that are not currently enrolled in the Miami-Dade Public School System. The services include individual counseling, family counseling, bio-social assessment, and outside referrals for individuals with more severe treatment needs. All of our services are offered in English, Haitian Creole, and Spanish. We have noticed that students that are already out of high school no longer receive mental health services. With this grant, it will allow us to provide services to youth and young adults suffering from anxiety, depression, abandonment, trauma, PTSD, and other mental health issues. This will allow us to expand the program to offer mental health services to all youth and young adults that reside in the City of North Miami for a nine-month period. Some families have low or moderate income, deal with homelessness, or have no insurance. This will also allow us to expand the regular workshops that we currently conduct at the North Miami Library. All services are provided under the direct supervision of Ms. Dashville Singh, Executive Director of the Prosperity Social and Development Group Inc. Ms. Bill Singh oversees the licensed clinical social workers who are certified in teaching personal self-management and social resistance skills.
Good morning. My name is Emmanuel Florimont, President and CEO of MJD Wellness and Community Center. This year, we applied for two different grants. The first one is for our nourishing program, and the second one is for our health screening program. For the past five years, we've been providing health screening on the street for people to come and receive medical services for free. And based on this program, we see how many people that we was able to, like, decrease the chronic disease, decrease emergency room problems, because based on that, people have access every month to come, they're gonna see a doctor, they have their medication, and like that, they feel like more comfortable coming, because there's no regulation, there's no money asking, there's not a lot of information asking. And during the past five years, we've been successful doing it. Based on the COVID, the support that we had from other organizations was decreased. So what we do right now, we create in the center. Uh, you're gonna see the video of the center building, and the next few months, we're gonna do the grant opening. This center will provide help and wellness for the community for free. It's another success for MJD. Like, in five years, we have our own medical center where our North Miami resident can see a primary doctor, can see a mental health, sit down with a social services advisor for help and support. It's not an easy task, but we work hard to make it happen. We create also an HIV program where we're gonna help people, especially women, that not educate enough about that disease, that to help them understand it's a problem, we need to find a solution, we need to give them medication, and they don't have money, they don't have documentation. But with our help, with our partners, those people are gonna be able to receive those type of service for free. We thanks a lot of people, especially God, for the capacity, for everybody that he put around us to help us build that community center. We asking you to come and visit the place, and the next few days, we're gonna open a community center where North Miami resident can come and receive primary doctor, mental health, nutrition, social services for no money. Thank you so much. primary doctor, mental health, nutrition, social services for no money. Thank you so much.
Good morning, my name is Dr. Charlie Wood and I am the founder and the president of the Ladies of Val and Empowerment with two major components. The Ladies of Val and Empowerment, the empowerment of underprivileged women, and the Youth of Val and Empowerment, the mentorship of admist teenage girls from public school. How did I get there? Two thousand six, I realized how blessed I was. And when I came to this country, I didn't have a mentor and a coach. Even though history reveals the youth with a mentor, a coach, a role model, they tend to do better than those who don't. I did not have, but I still did, I still did great. And the idea came to me, Dr. Alud, it was time for you. Girl, come on, girl, to go return to your community to pay forward, and that's what I did. So you know it's not easy studying anything. I did not know where to go, whom to connect with. I opened my living moment and I began to uh empower women teaching them at the end of view. And I had to get their resumes ready. My expertise is in human resources management and employee development. So when I thought my job was done and I realized, girl, it's an assignment. So two thousand fourteen, the Ladies of Val and Empowerment gave back to the youth of Val and Empowerment. The Youth of Val and Empowerment, this is the pride and joy of this organization. It's the after-school leadership development program for admissions teenage girls attending public school. My friends, we are here in the city of progress to save our girls. I cannot help everybody, but I refuse not to do something. From two thousand fourteen to now, over two hundred girls have been mentored, have been coached, have been developed. So this morning, I was so happy, proud about. When I was hosting a leadership program for the girls going to college and my keynote speakers were the alumni, two different alumni. The success of this program from the city of North Miami was making a name for itself, rest with the alumni. The former president of the Yobi Alumni Program, Kechia Ralco, who came to the program was unable to look at nobody in the eye, not able to speak. So before she finished with high school, graduated from Miami-Dade, now K T, I can speak anywhere because of the Youth of Val and Empowerment program. This morning, she shared her story with the students. She's a recent graduate of the University of Central Florida. And she told me that I would not return back to the city of North Miami. So she passed a crown to the fellow, to the fellows, Philonia and Philomene Pierre, who did so well. There were also a speaker, Magnette A, Miami-Dade College. This Yobi program is making a name, as I said, for the city. They get with their uniforms, this pink blazer with the logo with the black band with the Canadian name. And they learn how to greet, good morning, sir, good morning, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, this is my pride and joy, and it's very good pride who's making a name in the city. Because of the work with the Yobi program, a partner with the North Miami Senior High, where the first teacher that began to work with us, Ms. Zanica, she kept sending students and the students kept going back to the school and talk about the school, the more students talked about the school, the more students came. If Ms. Lekudi, Ken, the principal, you would have made sure all the girls at the school attend the Yobi program, but you cannot force nobody. Some Yobi, some of the kids that come, some of them they left because this is a very disciplined program, very strict. Beginning from good money, this program, or the Yobi program, bullying is dead. Name calling is dead. Not able to get along with your sisters dead because this is a sisterhood. Ladies and gentlemen, watching this video, will you support one girl at a time by approving the Yobi's girl? The Yobi's grant, sorry. When you approve this grant, you are, you, you saying, Dr. Alud, let's do it together. You telling me, Dr. Alud, I can see the next Kamala Harris. This is an after-school leadership development program. They know about Kamala Harris. They know about Michelle Obama. They know what's going on. And they see themselves making an impact. So the success story of this program, guess where? In the hands of its alumni. I'm inviting you to visit W W that Yobi dot org and go click on the alumni. So everything that happened with the conference, I brought the pictures. It's, by the way, it's a good program. Do you know one thing? This year's very challenging for us. But one thing I know for sure, if, 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 like I said, people know, if, if let's say there's no place for me to continue with the Yobi program, the Yobi program will continue as long as I believe. If I have to stand on the tree, I will continue. Because if I can help one, now what is done? And when, when I saw this morning, that my three guests, I didn't have to speak. These leaders are leaders. I understand. It's critical for me to leave a legacy. And my legacy will continue and will finish with the youth. Thank you for your support. We are Yobis. They call themselves Amyobi, and we are in the city of North Miami. We are making a name, not only for the Yobi program, but also for the city because that's where we are. Thank you. Please approve this grant for the Youth of Val and Empowerment. Great, we create, create leadership empowerment. Thank you to all the supporters, all the volunteers, all the partners. Look, don't believe me. Go to Instagram and see what we do. Go to Facebook, we can see what we do. Go to our website. This is true story. Everything we do is public because we are a public charity. Am I happy?
Yes, I am happy.
When I see the leaders we got, wow. When I hear sit down and look at, share the humble beginning stories with the Yobi program, wow. Imagine that. I'm university graduates from the Yobi program, keynote speaker. Like I know for sure, the first Yobi outside the city of Ma- North Miami would be in Orlando. I believe it. I believe that, and I cannot ignore it. Thank you so much. Please approve the grant for the Youth of Val and Empowerment. I'm Dr. Alud. Thank you.
We started Growers Miami, an initiative to build free edible gardens and food forests for folks in our Miami community. We're committed to setting up gardens for folks hardest hit by COVID nineteen. And not by coincidence, are also those historically marginalized by systemic injustice. Are Black, Brown, Indigenous, LGBTQ, elders, chronically ill, women, families indifferently able. Folks are living in food deserts. These gardens will be for those who need it the most.
From my experiences, gardens have been able to create in these areas where people are most in need, a form of sanctuary. It creates this sense of peace from the normal chaos that we go through in this society.
So we pulled together a team of very skilled and experienced farmers so that we can build successful gardens that will produce healthy food and plant medicine.
We tend to have our own natural medicines that really help to fight a lot of different sicknesses within us, such as moranga and lemon grass, just spinach that even helps to fight cholesterol such as the longevity spinach. So what we're building for people is a raised bed, which is gonna have different varieties of seasonal plants. We also have another option of creating a full mini food forest for everyone. Fruit trees that can grow and thrive naturally in a food forest are Barbados cherry, mulberry, and all throughout the year like papayas.
Our garden recipients will be set up with the very best garden soil blend, compost, organic fertilizer. So we named our program Grow Roots because we believe gardening and eating real local food connects us to our cultural roots of our ancestors, to our roots as native beings of this earth, and builds connections to each other as a community.
I've seen that working with the land has brought us most together and also being in a, in a place mentally of wanting to better one another.
Growing our own food as individuals, as families, and as a community builds our collective resilience. Um, we really need resilience right now with everything that's going on. It's also sustainable for our environment, nourishes healthy bodies, and provides limitless learning opportunities for our youth.
Working with the youth has been um the biggest blessings because kids are wanting to be, you know, on the front line as far as like getting their hands dirty, planting the seed and seeing it grow and cultivating it. It's, it's, it's a very powerful thing because like it helps to teach the youth, this is all our home and we all need to take care of it together.
Gardening reconnects us to nature. It fosters love and connects us to joy.
It's delicious. Awesome.
Now you know about the Grow Roots Miami program that we're getting going. Uh, we are super committed to building gardens for people. We really appreciate your support. The more that you support us, the more gardens that we can build, and the more families that we can help.
And together, we will make it happen.
That's right, we will. We're building gardens no matter what. That's what we do, that's what we care about. We're committed.
The work will be done.
The work will be done.
Following the CDC guidelines for touchless contact in gatherings, Communities United is using technology for teleconferencing such as Zoom, Microsoft Team, and YouTube, which has proven to be a valuable resource in these uncertain times. The gathering facilities of old, such as the churches and community centers, have been replaced with living room and kitchen table webinars due to the global pandemic. However, Communities United will anchor these resources and continue to conduct seminars that will teach seniors about disaster preparedness, including emergency evacuation assistance. They will be informed about the resources available before, during, and after a disaster, such as shelter, food kitchens, and transportation, as well as what to do if medical help is needed. We will continue to stress the importance of social distancing, sanitation, and the use of personal protective equipment gear and sheltering in place amongst the COVID nineteen pandemic. Disaster kits will continue to be distributed and delivered to those seniors who are in need, inclusive of an heating cooler, mask, gloves, bleach, disinfectant wipes, insect repellent, water, etc. In closing, we will continue to make updated changes to remain fluid with regards to our educational resources as long as we are in this global pandemic. Note, all seminars will be placed with the following. Education on our website, webpage via YouTube, usage of the Miami-Dade County and the City of Miami television station, usage to radio distribution, for example, W M V M, and copies of our education will be distributed to local churches and senior living facilities via USB. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chi O'Drada. I am the founder, president of Copper Bridge Foundation. We are a nonprofit organization based in North Miami. We've been in North Miami for ten years. We're, this year, two thousand and twenty, celebrating our ten-year anniversary. Um, we love North Miami. As a matter of fact, we are working right now on on the community center on Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street and East Fourth Avenue, working with the city of North Miami. We're here today asking for um a grant to help us with our ten-year anniversary, uh Ten by Ten webinar series. Um, in the last ten years, we have traveled around the world, created uh many, many programs, um and we brought it home. We've bought international world-class entertainment to North Miami always um pre a charge for our North Miami residents. Uh, we worked with the city of North Miami, with the Mocha, uh W J Bryant, a little Haiti Cultural Center. And at this point, at this time, unfortunately this year, because of the COVID situation, we were restricted uh to do that and uh but we're used to this because in two thousand seventeen with Irma, we were forced to cancel our Copper Fest uh programs in North Miami. Then we were able to resume and do it. So we know what it's like. In this case, we had to see how can we uh continue our education programming uh to North Miami and frankly, to the world. And we came up with the new um um strategy, which is online streaming. And so we decided to bring our ten-year anniversary called Ten by Ten, which means we have ten um panel discussions about different variety of um the art from architecture, dance, music, theater, arts, visual arts, um and dance. Uh, all these uh events have been um uh uh exchange programs with North Miami. We have brought many of these artists here and uh it's been quite entertaining. So what we've done is we've asked these uh specialists to come back, to join us, and to do now a special panel discussion about that particular um, that particular style or, or art. And so what we're doing is we're bringing the world back to North Miami and then sharing that with our community. Um, the fact is, North Miami is the home of many nonprofits, in this case, Copper Bridge Foundation, which we're very proud to make our community uh known. Um, we're working very diligently to bring this forward. So again, we'll be working with uh specialists um from all over the world and our collaborators, in this case, the Miami Life Project, um Little Haiti Cultural Center, um, um, excuse me, Pundarte, thank you, Pundarte, is the Swiss Embassy, um and many other organizations around the world are coming together to support this uh program, Ten by Ten. Once we have this done, what we need is we will share this with our local educational institutions in North Miami and quite honestly, anyone and everyone from around the world. Um, with that said, we'd like to uh collaborate with the city of North Miami, offer them to be part of this and to have this accessible to every age uh or grade uh in our public schooling, also in the North Miami Library, the Mocha, and um so we need your help for this. Please, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Florimond Emmanuela, a CEO and founder of MJD Wellness and Community Center. MJD Wellness and Community Center is a nonprofit organization that's been working in the city of North Miami for the past five years. Thanks God, we always successful in everything that we are doing to help the community. But COVID helped us understand the work that we was doing for fun is not only fun. We really have people that need us, that need our services. This year, we decide to increase our services, like make our services like a priority for the community, for the community that we are working for and we love. With help of other people, we're gonna create in the next three months a food bank industry too in North Miami. With help of other people, we're gonna create in the next three months a food bank in District Two in North Miami. Well, people are gonna have access to come twice or three times a week to receive food. Not only food, but they're gonna have opportunity to medical services. It is a huge honor for us to now to come and ask you for more service, for more help, because without you, we can never, never achieve that. The food bank will be in District Two. We already have the warehouse now. We wanna build a warehouse to have food for our community. And the support that we are asking, we are asking to open not only to have food for the needy people, but at least we're gonna create a job for at least five people. They can come run the warehouse. Make sure that our community are safe and make sure that the kids is not going home hungry. And we're gonna create other opportunity for other people to make sure that those people are not in the bad condition that it's coming. Because after COVID, a lot of us doesn't know what's going on and when he's gonna stop. But those people, they need to feed their kids. They need to pay their rent. How are we gonna help them? One, people can't do it, but if we put our head together, we're gonna help them to move forward, to make their life easy. So today, we are asking you for more. And before everything, we have to thank the mayor, thank all the people that's been helping us to help those people in the community. But now we need your help more than ever because the community that count and us need us more than ever. Without you, we will not gonna be able to do it. So I want you to guys to see the video of the warehouse. We don't have nothing built yet. It's unbuilding. So we need your help to finish everything. Thank you.
That's the end of the video.
Okay, is there any?
Yes.
No, that I I wasn't sure if you heard us, sir. That was just the end of those presentations.
Yes, is there any um um input from uh the board?
I suppose we should do questions, but uh we need to open up for public comments if anybody is watching from the public.
Okay, I'm sorry, council. Yes, um, any um public comment? Staff, do we have any that are written and submitted?
No, not at this.
Okay, are there any online?
No, I do not see any online currently.
Okay, um, okay, we'll move then to the closing um public comment. Um, now to our board, uh board members, any impact? I mean, any uh input?
So Mike, what procedure are we gonna go about this structurally?
Well, structurally, I think we've gone through public comment, which we've had none. So now, as usual, we open it up to the individual board members uh for their uh input before we go to a final vote um on the resolution.
Okay, um, yeah, I've got, I've got some stuff. Debbie, just for future reference.
Yes, sir.
We've done, this is quite different. I mean, where I'd, I'd much prefer that the this was difficult from two perspectives for the applicants. I think one is this isn't something they're particularly good at, is putting a presentation together. And the tech, we don't know how to use this technology that well. It was very difficult to follow. If I hadn't seen the vid, the audio or the video prior to today, I wouldn't have understood half of it. It was out of sync and it was, it just wasn't, it wasn't helpful to the applicants. Um, so I've got a, I don't know whether I've got questions. I mean, I would, I would have preferred to ask questions as they made their um after they made their presentation, but since we're not gonna do that, let me just say this. For those who have done this in past years, as have I, they know that I've spent a lot of time with not-for-profits. I've been involved in, in, on the board of a not-for-profit for 22 years. I've been president of that not-for-profit for over half of that. Um, one of the things I learned through decades of doing grant applications is with few exceptions, there's really not a bad cause out there. I mean, there's some people that the cause is kind of cringy, but most part, I think people put their blood, sweat, and tears into what they're doing and judging whether one cause is more worthy than another is is difficult to impossible. But in raising money, which is what we're doing today, in raising money, the, the way it's done in the big leagues is it's less about your cause than it is how much of the money actually goes to the cause versus going to the overhead. I don't wanna build warehouses for people. I don't wanna, I mean, as much as we wanna create jobs, if the only thing that this org, an organization does is hire people and the money that we give them goes to paying those people, that doesn't, that doesn't qualify in my book.
I agree.
I'd, I'd like to know from the applicants, how much of the money that they raise? Because some people had very specific requests for dollars and some to me just threw a bunch of money out there and hopefully they could get a big portion of it. So I think I'd like to know where the, where specifically the money goes. How much of it goes to overhead? How much of it goes to building facilities, buying trucks? I mean, I, I looked, I went to the websites on, on most all of these and Mike, I think that's Mike, mute yourself, please. There you go. And in some cases, the requests for, for funding were all for overhead. It was funding general operations, truck for transporting supplies, looking for, wanna build a new building. That's not where, that's not where I think not-for-profit money should go. I wanna, I want, if you think you've got a worthy cause, that's where the money needs to go. That's a general rule of thumb that anything more than 10% starts to get frivolous. And I couldn't tell from a lot of these presentations, and maybe it's just because again, some of these, most of these applicants, this isn't ever how they would present themselves to somebody. But um, but, but that to me is, is the important part of this. How much goes to the, to, to the cause? Um, so just a couple of comments, I guess since this is the way we're gonna do it. A couple of the folks in general, I thought the first few that spoke today, and I'm trying to go back to the order. Uh, you guys have been doing this for a while. You seem to have a good organization. You've got experience and and you understand you're dividing loaves and fishes. And so you make the best use of the funding that you can get. I found some, there's, there's a new one. Bear with me for a second. I was terribly intrigued by Grow Roots Miami. You actually specifically listed where your money goes, almost to the dollar. Uh, and you identified that you've got 25 edible gardens that you're gonna, 25 free edible gardens in, in the city of North Miami. So I thought, I was pleased with that. Uh, I looked at some of the staff recommendations and staff, under no circumstances do I think we actually give more money than was requested. If we're given more money than was requested, we should take the extra and figure out other, other not-for-profits to be able to give them either more of what they've asked for or go to some that we're not providing funding to. Um, I guess I, I don't, I don't know how else to do this in this format, so let me let somebody else speak for a minute. Thanks.
Mr. Clark, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
Okay, unfortunately, I can't see everybody who's on um on the, on the meeting. But um i-if, please, staff, who I think uh does have a full view of everybody on the meeting, if you could identify, please, um, anyone who would like to make any comments, uh, please, uh, let us know.
Is this the Commissioner Edwards, the PS, can hear me?
Okay, Howard's raising his hand. Howard, do you have any comments?
Um, I have a couple of things. Um, what is the source of the funding? It's specifically for nonprofits, set aside money?
Yes. Community-based organization.
Bob basically said everything that I would have said. It's just, I feel like, I think this is like uh small amounts of money that I don't think we're in the business of building warehouses or paying payrolls for nonprofits. And it's the, the Grow Roots, that was the one where I, it's the only one where I wasn't just hearing words that felt nice and I actually had an idea of, okay, they're gonna be building these specific garden boxes and I know what that money is gonna be for. Also, um, what seems really concerning out of me, and I'm not sure how this played out last year, but um I'm very concerned about the uh maintaining or even increasing the budget for the um for the, for the meals for the elderly. So right now, the information is that they've got a hot lunch um Monday through Saturday, and then they've got a cold plated meal on Sunday. Um, and I was just thinking about those elderly folks that just get a cold meal on Sunday and kinda wish we could increase the fund to allow those elderly folks that have the money to be able to have a hot meal on a Sunday, you know? That's what really stuck out to me. It's on the, uh, meals.
Very good point, Howard. Um, does anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, this is, that which part?
Uh, okay.
I guess my comment similar to Bob is that there's a number of um for these two organizations that are getting paid over or funded over. Uh, and I'm not quite understanding why that is when there's Global Initiative Foundation, which qualifies but is only getting about half of their funding. And then there's additional organizations on the list that look like they qualify but are getting nothing. So I don't know if staff can speak to that.
Okay.
Um, hi, online, Marie, uh, Marie Housing and Social Services Assistant Director. I may interject and make a comment uh regarding the overage, uh, because what I brought that to the committee's attention. Um, they said their recommendation was if they were to service, for example, 10, by increasing the amount requested will allow them to serve more people because they have a budget. If they say in their proposal they were gonna service 15, if staff or the committee realize that with the services they'll be providing, the city will, will, uh, will benefit more. So they increase their allocation so they can serve more people or more residents. This is the intent behind it. Um, the planning commission still have the, uh, the power to reduce it or giving them, allowing them to have the amount requested because that's what they requested. But when I, when we went back and circled back with the, uh, with the panelists, that was their, um, their justification behind it.
Okay, well, uh, my, my, from what I'm hearing uh from everyone, there's two organizations that apparently um the board members would like to see uh funding increased. One was the grassroots and the other one was the foundation for senior citizens. Um, any input on, on those recommendations, committee?
I, I, first, I agree with the senior citizens. I mean, the money, the money that we're granting them, we know where it's going. It's going to, it's going to meals. I mean, and it has been for a while. So if, if they could provide more meals, I mean, I, I think we'd talk to all of the applicants. If you want 15,000, ask for 15. Don't ask for 10 and expect to get 15. Uh, that, that's, that's, that's not any, that's just bad business. But yeah, I would give, I would take some of the overage from other, from other, from other applicants and I would certainly give it to, to meals for seniors. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a life, that's a life, life enough problem.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Bob.
No, I'm, but I'm, I'm fine with that.
Howard?
Um, I wasn't advocating necessarily for increasing the budget for the Grow Roots, just that I understood what they wanted. I would certainly suggest increasing the budget for the meals for the elderly because I think it's just such an essential thing where a lot of the other applicants, I question whether it's really uh autonomous to our city as far as who they're helping. It seems to be more widespread throughout Miami. Um, but you know, the meals for the elderly is in North Miami specifically. Um, so, and, and also I just really think it's something that is an essential service being provided, like a life or death matter. And I didn't hear a lot of other life or death matters. That's, that's all. So just really concerned about seniors, that's all.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Ech, I see you nodding your head. Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, Mike, I, I, I agree. I think the, if you ask for 13, like on the Russell Reading Program, which I think is excellent, but they asked for 13,000, we're giving them 50,000. That 1,800 overage should definitely go, I, I, I believe, to the foundation of senior citizens to feed our seniors on, especially on, on Sundays. I, I totally agree with that. We, and Bob, you, you hit a home run. You, you really did when you, when you said, look, we're not in the business of building warehouses or paying for salaries. This, this should go to the people that need it. And they, they are right here in North Miami. I, I, I worked with them a few back in the early, uh, rather the late 80s, early 90s when I was in the police department. It's, it's, it's needed. It really is. I'd rather see that money go there. We know that these seniors need that, especially in these trying times.
Okay, again, I don't, can't see everybody, but if, yeah, staff, you can. Is there anybody else who's raising their hand or wants to be, have a, a comment?
Yes, Commissioner Milton Goodwin.
Pardon?
Commissioner Milton Goodwin.
Okay, Milton?
Hi, everyone. Um, the only issue that I'm having is that we spent so much time on this last year and divvying up and hearing, as we've done now again, um, hearing these fights, which again are great. Um, but I'm trying to find myself like with um some of the other council members concerned. Um, I have, and I asked for this last year. Um, we are not seeing where that money that they keep getting year after year after year. We're not getting that data. And I would like numbers. I mean, if you're getting $10,000, $20,000, how much ever you're getting, and we're giving that to you, and you come back the following year and ask that again? Give us some detail. Let us know what you've done with those monies. So I, which is what, again, the elderly foundation, they do. We know. And that's why they don't ask for more than typically than they would be. Um, but again, we did last year, we broke it down, and then on top of that, the other issue that I have is once we did all of that, our efforts got circumvented by the then city manager. So he railroaded us at the city council meeting and they voted on keeping everything the way that it was initially presented to us, but all of our efforts was for not, nothing. So that's the issue that I'm at.
Okay. Um, okay, anyone else? Anyone else? Stephanie have their hand up?
I don't see anyone's hands up, but I do have a chat question. I'm not sure if you want me to read that.
Yes, go ahead.
So Constance Miller is asking, can they say something to support Global Foundation budget?
I'm sorry, what?
They're asking if they can say something on the record to support Global Foundation budget?
Yes, if they would like to, with everyone's consent, yes. Although public hearing is already closed. Is everybody open to allowing reopening public hearing?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, all right. All right, so we're going to reopen the public hearing for this comment from, and ask her to identify herself, please.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Constance Miller. I'm the treasurer for Global Foundation. And the budget that we proposed, because of the classes that we want to offer to the residents, that takes planning. So we have to set up the classes, we have to locate the residents, we identify the zip codes we're going to be working with, we have to market to the residents, and we have to teach the classes. So that's why we need someone that's going to be the lead person in doing that. Plus, we are going to use, because now we have a lot of mental illness in the community, we have professional psychologists and ARMPs who will be available to assist and do a lot of counseling to individuals in the community. So that's why it looks like, you know, we have, oh, and we're also going to bring in someone to do our soft skills class, because we want to offer that to our residents. Because a lot of times, and I know industries say that, a lot of people are not educated, well, not educated, but not good with soft skills. And a lot of times, people lose their jobs because of that fact.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Constance.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're going to close public hearing again.
Mike, what group was that? I'm sorry. What group was that again?
Stephanie?
That was Global Foundation.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, board?
Can I say something?
I think public hearing is, has been closed, so.
Michael, Michael, hello?
I said, public hearing has been closed, so we need to, we need to move on. Okay, board, I think, is there a motion on the floor in reference to the money for the overage?
Well, yeah, this is Commissioner Clark. And I understand everyone saying that they want to take the overages, which I understand, and I support, but I'm not 100% in agreeance that we should be allocating it to an organization that we feel is better set to deserve. I think each organization had the ability to request a certain amount of fund. I'm okay with taking the overage and applying it to someone we might have not given the full amount. But I don't think it's fair to say that we're going to take it and give it to someone that we feel deserves it more, even though it may be at a cost. Every candidate had an opportunity to put together a proposal, do a presentation, and finalize their budget and their ask. We have individuals on the list who aren't getting fully funded. So I think we should evaluate that they should be allocated to the individuals not being fully funded.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Edgewich. Okay, is there any motions in reference to the overage or? Bob?
Well, first, I, Edgewich gets more, I don't understand what that group did. I mean, I watched their presentation. I would like to have heard somebody speak. And I watched, I guess I watched the video three times, because I kept having to stop it. Because it was moving quicker than I could, the slides were conveying their mission. So I didn't know really what they did. I got to MJD and I had a problem. Because they made two applications. We gave them $30,000 on their mental health piece. I went to their website, because I thought that was a lot of money. I went to their website and they didn't mention it. And now I understand that they're about to get into that segment of the business, or of a charity. And that, that kind of flies in the face of one of the requirements. I mean, that there's got to be some experience in what they're asking for money to do. I mean, they're now a fledgling company or fledgling charity that's going to get into something that they've never done before. And it certainly, maybe they have some experience, but it's certainly not demonstrated on their website. Their website shows food banks and a soccer clinic, or soccer event. The same website, again, requests money, and the money that's being requested is all for, is, most of it goes to overhead. They want to buy a truck. They want to build a warehouse. They want to cover office expenses. I don't want to give money to people to do that when we're, when we could be buying meals or taking care of other charities, that the money's actually going to the recipients. So I've got a real problem with $30,000 for MJD.
Okay.
I concur with that 1,000%.
Okay. So, board, we have a decision to make. Is, if, is there any motions in reference to the overage of where perhaps it should go to, or should we accept staff's recommendations as is? Kenny, you want to speak?
Yeah, what, I'm sorry, Bob. What group were you looking at here? I'm seeing the 3,000. Was that, was that MJD Wellness or who?
Yes.
Yeah, the first one on the list, and also the last one on the list.
That's MJD Wellness.
Correct. And you should have, Teddy, you already have two sheets on them. And the one with, that staff has recommended, that we give $30,000 to, is dealing with mental health. And they're not, they're not in that, they're not in that charity. I didn't do it.
Because you already, yeah, and the other one that we already have for mental health is. You've got a group, 1175 125th Street, Prosperity Social and Community Development Group. We already have that one. I see that, yeah. I agree with this.
Okay.
Quite frankly, the other thing that bothered me, and I'm not trying to pick on these guys at all, but I just saw it because it was such a big amount, is they're trying to do, take care of health and wellness for seniors, yet they don't, they don't accept Medicare. So, I mean, I just find it inconsistent with the way they're trying to run that charity. And I don't want to give them, my opinion is, $30,000 is way too much.
Okay. Howard, you had your hand up?
Yeah. Yeah, I was agreeing with everything that Bob was saying. And is that not the group that was saying that they were also going to be taking on dealing with HIV as well? Was that the same group? They mentioned they'd be getting into the mental health and they're getting into services for the.
Yes, they mentioned that.
Inviting HIV services and the privileged community. That whole big field to get into in of itself. And I'm acquainted with people that work for AIDS Healthcare Foundation, and I know that there's big companies and charities involved with, with those resources. And so it just kind of, it seems weird, like, oh, and we're going to do mental health, and we're going to do HIV. And, and it seems, my concern is that we're talking about $10,000, or $15,000, or $30,000, which are small amounts of money for a charity, or it's a large amount of money. But that amount of money is not going to take on dealing with setting up a charity in that business of mental health, or HIV, or hiring people, as Bob was saying. So it's just, I feel like the money should be going to small local charities that can actually do small local things. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Howard. If there's no other comment, can we have a motion to either assign the overage to one of the current participants or charities, or should we just allow the staff recommendations to go as they are? Does anybody want to make a motion as to the overage of where it should go, or should we just accept staff recommendations? Howard?
I would like to make a motion to put it for hot meals for seniors, any overage. It's an essential thing, feeding seniors.
Which recipient?
The, the meals for the senior citizens.
The North Miami Foundation.
Okay, all right. There's a motion by Howard.
I second that.
Second by Milton.
Mike, are we talking about a specific dollar amount, or we're just talking about taking 30,000 from, of, giving it to the North Miami Foundation, or how much are we talking about? What percentage?
Teddy, you've got $5,484 currently allocated that is in excess of the request.
So we're talking 5,400?
So there's 5,484 out there right now that was allocated beyond what the applicant requested. So I would, I think that's the money that Mike's talking about. Mike?
Yeah, that's the money that Howard has made motion on, yes. And it's been seconded by Milton. Can we have a roll call, please?
Oh, Commissioner Charles Ernst is not here. Commissioner Howard Tonkin?
Howard, you're muted.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Bob Paton?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael McDermott?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael, excuse me, Commissioner Milton Goodwin? Commissioner Bernadette Pierre? Commissioner Kenny Eich?
Yes.
Commissioner Edgewich Clark?
Oh, that's another one.
That's another one. Okay, I know Commissioner Milton Goodwin was on the line. Did we lose him?
He's still there.
No, I'm here.
Okay. So.
Need to vote.
Yes.
I voted yes.
Yes, okay. So that's five to one.
Okay, so just to clarify, that was only for a reallocation of the overage on Russell Life Skills and Reading Foundation and Avenues of Excellence, that the staff recommendation was in excess of the grant requested, and that money has been proposed to be reallocated to North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizen Services. I believe that's correct.
And I, just to clarify again, the 55,484 excess will be, will increase North Miami Foundation by $5,484, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask Mr. Clark a question? Edgewich, you wanted to give some money, some more money to Global Innovative Foundations. Was that correct?
Correct. They're, they've only requested $10,000, and they've only been given about half of that. And it's for training for low income.
Which charity were you speaking to?
That's Global Innovative Foundation.
They requested 50.
They requested 11,250.
Right.
And they only got 5,000.
5,000.
I would take that from MJD, if some, whatever you want to make a motion to. I would support that. You can, you come on, you.
Okay.
I guess, I would, before I start making a motion, I would want to understand, because Bob raised some concerns about that organization, I would wonder what staff's opinion and why they approved 30,000.
That's a good point.
That I'll just arbitrarily pull money without understanding why staff was granting that amount.
Um, based on what I, the feedback that I received from, from the panelists, not from us, the feedback, it's just like their, their services, they felt like we've already had so many of those services already in the, in the city, and then they feel, and they had enough experience, and you feel they had to fund them that, that amount of money.
Okay, Edgewich, do you have a specific motion in reference to taking?
I would like to motion. Yeah, I would like to motion.
Yes, Mary.
Taking the difference from MJD Wellness.
I'll do it there.
And provide it to Global.
How much would you like to move?
Uh, give me a second.
Mike, I gotta run outside for a second. I got a little emergency here.
Okay.
Just for the record, we still have a call.
Okay.
That would be $6,250.
I'm on Zoom, Joseph. I'll have to call you right back. Found out some info from the city, but I'll call you. Hello?
So Mr. Clark's motion is to take $6,250 from the staff recommendation from MJD Wellness and Community Center, and transfer that to Global Innovative Foundation.
Okay, with that motion, is there a second?
There's some background noise, and I wasn't quite sure what.
Hey.
What, Gary, would you repeat that? Because I couldn't make up.
My understanding of the motion that Mr. Clark made to fully fund the request from Global Innovative Foundation, they had requested 11,250. Staff recommendation is $5,000, which means they're short $6,250. And he was recommending that be taken from MJD Wellness and Community Center, and reallocate that to Global Innovative Foundation. Right?
Yeah, I see what they're.
Yeah, yes, that's the motion. Do we have a second? Bob?
Yeah, yeah. Gary, just, sorry. Where's the money come from?
MJD Wellness.
I second the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Stephanie, roll call, please.
Call. We have Commissioner Howard Tonkin, Commissioner Mike McDermott.
Yes.
Commissioner Bob Paton.
Yes.
Commissioner Milton Goodwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Edgewich Clark.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion that has passed for 6 to 0.
Okay. If there's no other motions to come before us, would we like to approve the CBO package as presented to us with the amendments? Is that the proper motion, Gary?
Uh, it's at the discretion of the board. If there are no other amendments, that would be.
Yeah, Mike, I'm back. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so.
I would like to make a motion that any of these applicants, that going forward, if they have received funding previously from us, that they give us specific accounting on what those funds did for them. that they give us specific accounting on what those funds did for them. In order for next year, we can take a look at that.
Okay.
And help us make educated decisions.
Right, for next year, that's a great recommendation, uh, Melton.
I second that.
Uh, excuse me, um, for your information, uh, Mr. Goodwin, every year, we do receive the beneficiary data. It is required for us to submit to HUD how many people that those agencies have served in the community. If this is something that you will want to have attached, we will do so, but we do get into account whatever services they're providing, how many people they have served.
I'd like.
Correct. No, I'm talking about a more specific accounting, a doll, a spreadsheet, dollar for dollar. When, uh, you know, $5,000 coming in, where do those $5,000 get allocated? $30,000 come in, where do those $30,000 get spent?
Good point.
They, they, they do provide us with a breakdown of their budget and where those money gonna come. This is based on what they get reimbursed. We don't just give them the money like that. They submit a quarterly report every three months uh, to account for every single penny that they receive every month. And then we, if they do not submit their backup, their supporting documents, they do not get reimbursed.
Okay, so what you're saying is that there is information that you receive that us, the commissioners, have not received, but yet we're still expected to make decisions based off of that, off of your recommendation.
Okay, I, I, I'm so, I'm sorry, Marie, go ahead.
Uh, if, if this is something that you are requesting, staff will make it available for you, but we are telling you based on HUD regulations, this is what we must do in order for us to disburse the money. We don't have any problems sub- submitting it, just like you made your requesting, uh, any request this year by, you know, getting details, videotapes and everything else for it to took into account for us to receive the video, for the panelists to see the video. We have done that this year. But if this is something that the Planning Commission will want us to provide moving forward, we will do that as well, but we cannot reimburse any money without any supporting documents, because this is part of the federal regulations.
I would like to, I would like to show.
Okay. But again, here's the thing. I did request this last year, and that's why I'm being so adamant about it this year. Because I specifically remember, and we can pull the tapes from last year, saying that we're, we're basically just like throwing money out to people for, you, you know, and we don't know if it's being spent on what it's supposed to be spent on or not.
Okay, I think, Melton, uh, let's do this. Let's make it formalized in a motion, um, that, uh, to staff.
I did. I said I make a motion that any applicants that apply next year, that have received funding previously, be required to show where those funds were allocated.
Okay, all right. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Who seconded, Commissioner?
Mr. Clark.
Clark, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Commissioner Howard Tonkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bob Paton?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael McDermott?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton Goodwin?
Yes, and thank you.
Um, Commissioner Kenneth Each?
Yes.
And Commissioner Edwidge Clark?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Okay, so now we move, now we move to approval of the, uh, CBO applications, um, um, and the report is proposed by staff. Um, do we have a motion a- as amended? As amended?
I'll make that motion as amended.
Okay, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kenny Each. Okay, roll call, please, Stephanie?
Wait, Miss Stephanie, hold on for one second. So, Mr. Each, I just want to make sure you were aware of the second motion that was approved when you stepped out. There was, uh, you were here for the First Amendment. Were you here for the Second Amendment, Amendment, or did you hear it while you were out?
No, no, I had a little emergency.
Okay, so the Second Amendment was a motion by Mr. Clark to tr- to fully fund the Global Innovative Foundation um, in the amount of the $11,250 that they had requested. So that was $6,250 that came from MJD Wellness and Community Center. And that motion was approved by the commission while you were out. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, um, on the floor, um. Stephanie, roll call.
Commissioner Tonkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bob Paton?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael McDermott?
Yes.
Commissioner Melton Goodwin?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kenny Each?
Yes.
And Commissioner Edwidge Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes zero, seven to zero.
Okay, all right, um, is there any old business to come before us? Any, yes?
Yeah, Mike, I was going to bring up new business to whatever.
Okay, new business, Kenny?
Yeah, I, you know, I've been trying to get a hold of the, uh, Planning, uh, Director. You know, with Johnson and Wales, uh, leaving us, I think it's kind of imperative that we kind of have, uh, some input into what's going to happen here. Um, I spoke to the Economic Development Specialist, uh, they're not being funded, and this is a good time to, maybe for us as a city, to get with Johnson and Wales and go out and recruit. Uh, uh, make it like a campus over here, say like, uh, Amazon or one of the Fortune 500 companies, instead of just letting it be helter-skelter out here. I remember this neighborhood before Johnson and Wales came here. And let me tell you, it wasn't too nice. Uh, Lakeside Apartments, we used to get 200 calls a year for service over there. Uh, the trailer park is gone. I mean, with, with Johnson and Wales here for the last 28 years, they improved the quality of life overall. And, and crime went down dramatically. And now, you know, they're going to be out of here within a year. Uh, no more private security patrol on the streets. Uh, some of these buildings, which are now dormitories, are okay for dorms, but I worry about them becoming apartments again. And, you know, I'd like to know where we're going to go with this. Are we going to, uh, have a plan, say, for market rate apartments? Are we going to have a plan for all of a sudden, are we going to become workforce housing? Are we going to become, uh, uh, you know, uh, some other substitute type housing? Or, or are we going to just, uh, go hell? We, we, we should have some kind of direction to go on this. And right now, Johnson and Wales is trying to market the property, rightfully so, it's theirs. Uh, but, but I think we should, uh, have some input into where we're going to go with this. I, I, I really worry about it, you know, and now, uh, with the transportation hub, I don't know what's going to, did the county vote on that today, or is it going to vote on that? Is it going up to 151st Street, or was it still scheduled for 123rd Street? I don't know where we're going to be with that. So, I mean, we, we, we have a big future here and, uh, a big void to fill. And instead of us, you know, we're, we're a planning commission. We're supposed to come up with our own, uh, with ideas. And we're more than a rubber stamp. You know, staff is great, but we, we should have some input. We live here, we own, this is our, our area. And so I, I, I think it's important that we do this. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is, uh, last time we, we had a, we were talking about the charter school going over there on Northwest 17th Avenue, and we had some debate about, uh, concrete walls and stuff. Well, if you go behind Johnson and Wales, not Johnson and Wales, Home Depot off of Sans Souci Boulevard by the tennis court over there, um, they have a wall. And they also have a, I would say a lateral park, a walkway from Sans Souci Boulevard to about 122nd Street. It's absolutely gorgeous. There's a wall that, uh, backs up uh, to the park and to the residential area. It's all green space, trees, landscaping. It's absolutely gorgeous. And I, I think some of you guys ought to take a, a ride over there and see what it looks like. I walked through there and it's very pleasant. I do my walk in the morning. Sometimes I take a shortcut because it's a, it's a gorgeous little walk over there. But anyway, it can be done, right? So anyway, that, that's, I would like to ha- have some input from the, um, the Planning Department and what we're doing over here. I think it's important.
Okay, thank you, Kenny. Okay, um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any objections? Okay, um, that being said, thank you.
Meeting adjourned at 3:47 PM.
Okay, thank you all very much for attending.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.